Just a coincidence.
I know.
I like that you pre-schedule your emergency.
Exactly.
That's really, uh...
It's thoughtful.
Very productive of you.
Yeah, my daughter said she's gonna call me at 7:08 and say...
All right, everybody turn your phones off. Everybody, everybody be brief on their, uh, oral reports tonight. We gotta get outta here.
You got it. I think that we did...
No oral reports of the mayor, none? Michael, did you say none?
Oh, oh, thank you.
All in favor? Motion carries.
I told Don I want both these CDs turned back to the game immediately.
We did, we did the audit last week, so Lisa can be excused.
I like it.
I'm up for that.
Six o'clock.
Six.
I second the audit presentation from last week. Why do you gotta do a report?
I second that.
Okay, we're gonna call our meeting for the brownfield development of the 2,100 Southfield Road. And call the or, call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Do we please stand for pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could please have a roll call?
Certainly. Councilpersons Baer?
Here.
Dupree?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Salsito?
Here.
Soar?
Here.
Tobin?
Here.
And Mayor Higgins?
Here. Okay, I think we're going to start off with our assessor. He's just dying to talk about this.
Yeah, uh-huh. Okay, couple of quick things. Condominiums in this instance is commercial.
Could you talk at the microphone, 'cause it's still gonna be televised.
First thing, these condominiums are commercial condominiums, so to eliminate that, that confusion, um, you can have commercial, you can have industrial, or you can have residential. These are commercial. They used commercial condominiums as opposed to the splits because it gives them more leeway and gives them a couple more parcels. It's legal above board. It gives us a little bit more control of it. They could've also used a planned unit development, which would've been far more complicated for everybody. Other thing that you brought up earlier, uh, what happened to the split they asked for? They chose not to do it. They still have the agreement with the hotel company.
With the same one, Bob?
As far as I know. But they tend to make changes when we don't know. The new maps are there. They came in at four. The biggest thing that we had an issue with was the radius for the fire trucks, and huh, suddenly magically it's fixed. Now, I asked for this at about three o'clock on Friday for the last time. I've asked for the last month, and magically they show up at four o'clock today. That for us is probably the primary issue, but I am gonna ask Mr. Kazoo to join me.
Moses before, ten after.
Mostly because, um, of all the issues under that site and to the north of it, so I'm gonna let John talk. That way you don't have to be bored with me for the whole evening.
Good evening. Unplanned event, so here we go. Presently out there, and I'm gonna, let's assume that Dix runs north and south, and I'm gonna call Southfield east and west. On the north side of the property between this, I'm gonna call it the Sears complex and our park, going through that alley is where the utility easements, water, sanitary, are in those easements. They're in very, very rough shape. Then let's say the border between Lincoln Park and Allen Park, again, those utilities are in very bad shape. And the water and the sanitary ends in between, let's call it the water tower and Southfield Road, but those utilities are in very rough shape. Now, if you can picture almost splitting that entire lot, east and west, there is a drain that goes through, and it's a Wayne County drain. Allen Park utilizes it to carry their sanitary. And at that point in time, just about at Dix Avenue, that's where they dumped their dry weather sanitary into the Lincoln Park sanitary system, and it's carried to the interceptor through usage of our pipe. On a rain event where they have, they may have bypass pumping about even with the bank, but let's say to the north, maybe 200 feet, there is a buried sanitary pump station there owned by Allen Park, of which they have the easements for. And when they have to utilize that bypass pumping, it goes into the LeBlanc drain that parallels Southfield Road, and they put their sewage into that storm sewer just under bypass operation. So that has to be maintained. This group cannot affect that. And of course, in my opinion, what I haven't seen here is the plans, number one. Number two, they'll have to come up again and put in new utilities, because the utilities there are not very good. When, uh, probably about 12 years ago, when they decided not to heat the buildings and kinda let, and they terminated the leases, most of the water services for the fire suppression, one winner, well, actually, two winners straight, those would always burst, including the water services underground feeding the buildings. That's the best I've got for my knowledge on that property. Any questions?
Through the chair? So you're saying those underground there, those have all burst?
Uh, the water services, most of them, yes.
So there's no...
There's no, there's no, in my opinion, no usable water system that they can reuse.
So it all has to be redone, revamped?
Replaced.
And they're aware of this?
They've never talked to me, so I have no idea what they're aware of.
Oh, my God.
I'm just letting you know.
If it's gonna be a new build, they, they probably would have to...
That's a recommendation. It would be to replace the infrastructure.
Just one question. Are the buildings, as they sit, do they miss the Allen Park, or are they over it? Can you tell by looking?
The buildings are, if you can picture, there's a yellow guardrail back there, and it runs perpendicular to Southfield. The west side of that yellow guardrail is Allen Park. The east side is Lincoln Park.
Well, I'm talking about the, the...
The big drain.
The underground?
Big drain, yeah.
All right, the, the big drain, the LeBlanc drain, I don't know if you guys, any of you can picture, uh, there used to be a separation with no footings, um, and that's where the big drain came through. But it, it runs down, I think it's a second driveway that goes out to E course, and Wayne County will have to maintain that drain. Because Allen Park does utilize it to send their sanitary through to our sanitary system.
To your knowledge, will Wayne County allow them to use that alley as a driveway?
That easement?
Yeah.
That one, I, I'm not gonna try to predict Wayne County, what they will or will not do, but I know, I think it might've been, it wasn't Menards. Who has a facility right next to the Southgate Fire Department? Who has that store, I don't remember?
Walmart.
Walmart, Walmart at one point in time wanted to put a facility in there, and Sears, and from my understanding, 'cause I was not employed at, in Lincoln Park at the time, but I was in Allen Park at the time, Sears somehow blocked that Walmart from moving forward.
Walmart wanted to build over that alley.
Yes.
And, and that's what the county said, no, never gonna happen.
And that was part of it, but I thought, from my understanding, I don't know if it's true or not, that Sears blocked, blocked it because supposedly the judge had concurred that they had sole usage of the utility easement back there where the water and sanitary was encapsulated, or located, I should say.
Lillian, I believe you're up next.
Okay, obviously, there's a lot of things still in question, but as I was reading through the, um, the papers that we received, and in the packet for, um, the declaration of easements and restrictions, and in the master deed of this condominium, there, we know of two companies that are leasing from them, and one being Chick-fil-A and one being Kelly Services, and both of them come with their own restrictions, one of them, one of them being a car wash establishment. But yet, that map that was provided to us tonight still shows a car wash. So I'm totally confused as to what the plan truly is.
I'm actually, without due respect, I'm actually surprised that this group has allowed to be a brownfield, put together and established without a set of plans.
Well, I just think we're gonna give an approval without a set of plans.
I don't think we've given a, we haven't given approval yet.
Not approval on the drawings, but have you created the brownfield authority within the city?
There is a brownfield. Who is the brownfield?
So the city of Lincoln Park has a brownfield authority. The members of the board are the same people that are on the Economic Development Corporation. What we don't have is the city's application form for a brownfield filled out and turned into the city clerk. They have never done that. Okay? So everything that they're doing has been, to this point, through the B R A, the Brownfield Authority Board. They have not actually submitted their brownfield stuff to the city clerk's office. I don't know who else has gotten it, but it has never been given to me.
I don't think they're gonna do that.
With the application that we have. It's been a long, long time since we've had a brownfield done in this city. And in fairness, the members of the E D C and the B R A, I don't believe, have ever really sat on, in on a brownfield. This company seems to be jumping ahead and, and trying to skip steps and go through things without following...
Well, that's what's surprising to me. If, if I may, they're the developer, they have this background, I, I believe they've done brownfield before, so why this process isn't correct or being followed in the proper steps is really surprising to me.
Turn the microphone, please.
I'll never remember that. Part of it is a timing issue. Brownfields are complex, and they have a lot of steps. That's kinda the first step, so that we have a clue as to what they're gonna do with the property. Then they have to fill out their application. Okay, 'cause that has to be approved before anything else can happen. And then...
But if, if I may, that's conflicting with the paperwork that we were given.
Yes, it is. Part of this is, I've done maybe 40 of these, they always start off this way, almost, usually because it's people that don't deal with the brownfields that start off dealing with it, and somebody else has to step in to kinda go, mm, no. You guys, they haven't come before John, or John, or me, or, well, anybody that actually has to deal with this. Have they talked to you, chief?
Yeah.
Okay.
As far as I know, they've been through the planning commission.
They have, and that's part of the problem, because now they're changing things, and now they have to go back to the planning commission. We, on our end, we need to walk them through the process here, because they think the planning commission actually is the final say. They don't realize that it comes to you. I found this out about five o'clock on Friday. So we're, I will walk them through the process, 'cause I think we all want something to happen there, but it's gonna be a little slower than they want, because they have other things to do. But I have done these. Celine's got three of them that we did, and they're very happy with them. You, as a council, have the final say. I think a lot of this is premature, that you got thrown the stuff without, you know, a little bit back, bit of background on your parts. The Chick-fil-A thing, uh, I hadn't heard about it at all until you brought it up, which Chick-fil-A's great, um, it's got traffic issues that we're gonna have to figure out. And Kelly Services, I, they accidentally sent us the wrong map last summer, and it had Kelly Services on it, so we knew about that one. They didn't want us to know, but we knew about it. So we will walk them through, with your permission, the process, because the first thing that has to happen is that, that condominium has to be approved. My big problem with it was fire truck access. I believe it's better now, because they, before they had it as 45-degree turns, you're not getting our truck through there. Then we will go step by step through this, and what I will do, if you choose, is essentially give you guys a bi-weekly update as to where we're at, so that when you need to make decisions, you've got all the data you need, 'cause, my apologies, but I thought you guys had everything, which is why I got it to you last week, 'cause I didn't have everything. Well, you actually gave me a piece that I didn't have, too. So we will walk through this with your permission, and I will get the clerk to help you with, with her application, 'cause ours is a little bit different, every city's a little bit different. And then we will sit down with the brownfield folks here and work with them, so they know what's going on. And it'll be a process, but I think it'll be a smoother process if we actually watch over it. But that's, you know, your guys' choice. Oh, he ran away.
To the chair, if I can, real quick.
Yes.
Who's going to make the decis, the final decisions, though? The planning commission?
City council.
Well, nothing's going to happen unless we allow it, correct?
Yeah, 'cause all these votes, it goes through planning, and then you, as the council, So you're the, the final arbiters in all of this.
I threw the chair around, and, you know, I mean, I'm confused, I'm embarrassed, number one, I, I don't get this. But where's the developer currently? I, I was expecting the developer to be here. Was he notified about this meeting? Does he have anything to expand on, or...
Um, I asked them to actually come and give us a presentation, 'cause, well, the first one we got wasn't. I don't see them. Like I said, I got the map from the different engineering company at four o'clock. I will speak to them again and see if they can come in and give us an honest-to-goodness presentation, but up until this point, to use a phrase that I normally use, it's not my dog. If you want me to, I will husband this through, but that's, again, your choice. The other thing that we've been working on, and the reason John's up here, is the agreement to hold harmless and clawback clauses. I thought about that with people here for a while, until the mayor finally said, yes, we want that, and so did everybody else. So the engineering issues were part of the hold harmless. We don't wanna have to pay if they break something like that, what, 128-inch? We don't wanna have to deal with that, 'cause that's millions of dollars that we don't wanna be responsible for. Those are the things that I called the attorney and talked to him about, and he said he was told not to put them in initially. You guys have to kinda tell us what you want us to do at this point, 'cause I want, I want those in there. I have a history of, of fighting for those things, and people tell me to ignore it, and then bad things happen. I'd rather not.
I, I absolutely think we need to have it in there.
Absolutely.
I mean, if things are in the condition that we're being told they're in, they're planning all this stuff, I can't see why we would take a risk and be held responsible for something when they're making these plans and wanna do these things. No, if this is, is their dog, let them be responsible for their dog, but we should not be held responsible for any of this.
Okay. But like I said, I'm the one that just had a multiple-day knockdown drag-out.
Yeah, and the other thing is, if they can't come and talk to us about this, and you're inviting them, and they're not showing up, and, you know, they don't wanna hear what we have to say before this comes to fruition, and we're gonna move forward on this, it gives me qualms to begin with, because there are certain things that we want and we don't want, and we tried discussing this, but months ago with them, and obviously with what we're reading in here, they're not listening.
Part of that may be, um, change in management here. I don't know if there's communication going to the former city manager. I don't know if there were decisions that were made that we don't, well, obviously, some things were made, 'cause, you know, we're all kind of in the dark. So we're, I'm as confused and concerned as you are. I have to administer this thing, and so does the assessors who follow me for 30 years.
Right.
So I want it exactly right.
We do, too. We do, too.
Right, I think it's time to regroup.
We deserve it to be right.
You're preaching to the choir.
Yeah, exactly. We all want this project to happen, but we, it's not gonna be done if it's not done right.
Mm-hmm.
Because we, again, you know, we're leaving it to our legacy.
Mm-hmm.
And it needs to be done right.
I agree.
As a matter of fact, Bob, in the, um, brownfield agreement that I read through, you know, we, you talked about the development being commercial only, but yet this agreement still specifies industrial.
They fixed that.
They did fix it.
They didn't fix it. Our, our attorney fixed it, attorney we hired to deal with the brownfield.
Okay.
Um, that has been corrected. He's doing the, the hold harmless and clawback clauses, and there were a couple other things that we found, oh, the, the meetings with, um, the city's representative, once this is all said and done, so that we know progress, that was an optional thing, and I said, no, no options. It's gotta be done, because we gotta know what's going on.
Right.
So I fought for that one, too.
Thank you.
One additional item that I'm wondering out loud is, has there yet been a cost of what the contaminants are to do the removal? Has anybody heard any, what the contaminant is?
No.
Or the dollar amount?
We got a young man in the back, so they hand up.
Yes.
But there is.
There is. They've done all their testing at this point, and giving assessment of what it would take to...
Correct.
Can you, can you come to the microphone, please? This is, this, everybody in Lincoln Park is wanting to know about this, and so let's, we get it on television, let's let them know.
Part of what I think, um, might be being misconstrued as out of order is the corporation is trying to get its homework done before it does all the other details. And so one of the things they have to do, even before they could come give you an application, is to explain to the city what they wanna put there. That has to go through Planning Division, and in doing so, they have presented themselves with several plans. In fact, the, the solid item on the, on the ballot right now is a four-story, uh, express hotel, and there's a private corporation who was already employed to put that in, and they independently have already gone through the preliminary stages of the Planning Division. In fact, they've also gone through zoning. All of them are written with clauses that the brownfield and all the final details of the, the condominium system would have to be approved by city council. So the only, the uniqueness of their layout program is, is the fact that they only have two companies, out of all the buildings they have on, on the plot, there's only two companies that are named to go into action when they left the approval with stipulations to council and the brownfield, were the hotel and the car wash. Everything else, let me repeat this, everything else at that time when we closed was all spec buildings. There was five more units on the front, on Southfield, and there were two units on the back. They were all spec. They would build them with the intent that someone would come. They had them designed for certain types of businesses, but no names were put on the table. But that was what they had to do, to find out if they were even allowed to go, AKA, split the properties and put everyone on an individual parcel, which they discovered wasn't possible, so they had to go backwards to the condominium system. So they went through those processes, probably more of the need to find out the homework of what they're gonna be allowed to do in the city, and then some of the other things they've got behind the eight ball and got ahead of the game since then. But when it comes to the, um, utilities, they were written and described in our planning commission that anything that was gonna be built new, everything underground, all water utilities, all sewer utilities, would have to be replaced new. So the issue that you're asking of all that lot, what's it gonna be done, the planning commission and our reports said, when you get this design ready to go before planning ready for the building department, all your underground won't be able to be reused, because you're now putting one building majorly on the, on the premise presently, you're gonna take it out and you're going to put seven buildings on the ground. So everything underneath will have to be new. So that wasn't a surprise to them, and that was informed in our planning division meetings with them. So that piece is already there, whether they want to accept it, agree with it, or try to get around it, that's the other one. The one that John and I cannot address is the giant 128-inch pipe that is owned and run and supported and controlled by Wayne County, and they continue to change the parameters for the building process over top of, or around, or near that, that drain. However, again, at the planning commission, it has been required and stated that they would have to do their own homework in lieu of Wayne County. We would not do the research for Wayne County regarding that pipeline. They must present it to us, and until they got that and the deed settled, we won't be able to move any forward with the planning division. So those are things that were in motion, whether they have them rectified with Wayne County or not, I can't tell you, 'cause I haven't heard the final say on that. So part of this might be they were working on getting home... So part of this might be they were working on getting homework done before they got all, and then they got ahead of the game. And what they were missing now, and I do, I have confirmed last week from our city planner that they have confirmed with our attorney that we have the deed that we actually need for all the properties to be properly posted. Now they really need to give the city clerk the proper applications so that anything else we touch or even plan on or think of starts when that date comes. And that's the piece left over that they have not provided. So I appreciated the arguments that our assessor and the fire department, the building department has addressed that we needed 30-degree turn radiuses for all the way around each of these buildings. They have granted that for us. They have provided the updates. They still have not provided an application that has been complete and liability services. So that's the update I have for what they've done already and they have met the needs of the city planning commission under the limitation and stipulation that going forward before we could grant them a final approval of their land use as they gave it to us. And that you understand, both Jonas Brothers as well as the company that was building the hotel, both met independently with case studies for what they wanted to present. So both of those are separated. Both of them have met it under the stipulation that everything would not go finalized through brownfield and then through the city commission, main city council. And so that's where we're really at, waiting for them. But they cannot touch the building that is present there until this brownfield gets settled because of the cost to abate the building and to ask, to remove it, the top is easy enough to do, but taking out the ground underneath, particularly the south side of the building where the auto dealership used to be or auto repair shop is, that's the highest level of contamination. In reality, though, the reports do not show an extreme level of contamination. It's not, it's not life threatening. It's manageable by excavation and removal. And if they're going to put a four-story hotel on there, they'll have to go that deep anyhow. So those things are already in the principles of what has to be there. The biggest contamination or equal combination of cost will be all the asbestos and lead that's inside that building and properly removing it before they tear the building down. That'll be the big abatement issue. And then once the building's down, they'll have to abate to approve with Eagle and Phase One and Phase Two for soil contamination.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Mr. Myers, I guess I'm still confused because you're treating this separately, the hotel and the condominiums, but yet they didn't go forward with the lot split.
No, I'm not, I'm, I am and I'm not. Let me clarify for you. I appreciate the asking for clarity. They had to go through the condominium policy to get all of it done because they couldn't split the property. They were originally trying to take the hotel and separate that and split that land and then take all the rest and make it a condominium. Couldn't happen, didn't have the frontage road capability to make that hotel work that way. So once they did that, they made that agreement that that would all be a part of the condominium system. However, because there's only one company that's committed to going into that property, it is the hotel, they've already begun their process to get approval from the city. When everything else is done, they can start one of them because they are not a spec building. They are actually a corporate organization that intends to put their hotel on that property with, I believe, don't quote me, I could be wrong in my old age, but I believe it's actually 97 units will be kitchened and facilities for long-term stay. So it's not meant to be an overnight, you know, three days there, but literally an extended stay type of hotel. But that's why they have two different cases and that's why they went to, the city planning separately. Because one is intended that when the condominium system is scheduled, they already know where they want to go and they already know what they want to provide and they already know what their land space will be inside and out. So they've already presented their case before planning commission. It was approved with stipulation that brownfield gets done, condominium gets done, and city council approves it. So they've gotten as far as they're allowed to go until those next three steps take place.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Can, John, can you tell me exactly what the zoning for that corner, that whole property there is listed as?
Commercial? Regional district? It's a regional district program, so it can be commercial or industrial, but we're asking it to be commercial only.
So industrial, how, that's where my concern is.
Right now, we're not recommending it and the planning commission is not putting it as a table that they wanted it to be commercial either. But it's regional right now as it sits. But it means it can hold either one. And the planning commission did not grant them the right to hold it other than commercial, not industrial. That would be the same concern we had with the regional district for the other half of that property when they wanted to put a transit facility station in there. And we denied that.
The long-term hotel situation, that's a national brand?
That is correct.
I'll throw the chair, Your Honor. Just for the residents at home so they can have a better understanding, if council recalls, the last four or five years, we've always asked, inquired about the Sears project, what's going on, blah, blah, blah. Last three years, there's been movement, people interested, we got a developer, we're moving forward. What was the purpose of this meeting? If someone can answer that question, because I don't see it. I spent hours reading all this material expecting to have some more clarification and we don't have it. So where do we go from here and what was the purpose of this meeting?
The purpose of this meeting was to kind of give you a feel for where you have to go. That was a huge problem before they sent it at four o'clock today.
Okay, then what was the purpose of this meeting then?
Clarification.
Were we supposed to agree on some of this stuff?
No.
Because we had questions on these.
No, I didn't expect you to make any decisions because you didn't have enough information. The packet that you got, did you have before?
Not till Friday, late Friday, yeah.
Right. You got it about when I got it.
So moving forward, where do we go?
I will contact the developer tomorrow and ask them to come in and do a presentation to explain exactly what they're going to do. Because right now, we've got 70,000 square feet of spec building in the back. We don't know what it's going to be. You don't know what it's going to be. You've got a car wash, maybe. You've got a hotel, which is about the only thing that's a guarantee. Plus, there's some discussion about Kelly and there's some discussion about Chick-fil-A. This stuff should have been dealt with a long time ago and I just wanted to give you an update as to, here's all the data that you, that, you know, should have been in your hands a long time ago.
Well, thank you very much for your openness and...
I do believe that even though we're not getting everything what we wanted at this meeting, we got better plans, so we took a giant step forward as far as them getting it together, but it's still a long ways to go. But we have, we've made them take a step forward. So if nothing else, this meeting managed to do that even though we didn't do it at the meeting. If that makes sense to everybody. And does anybody else have any other questions? Do you have anything else you would like to let us know?
No. Like I said, I will talk to them tomorrow and see if, when they will come in and give us an actual presentation. I will get the draft document from the attorney so you can see it. He doesn't want to present it to you guys until the Jonas Brothers have a copy of it and they can look at it. So I understand that. We'll have it available for you to look at, but we didn't want to distribute it. That's per the attorney. And then we'll have to go through and reread the legals on that to make sure everything is right and also to find out if they're allowed to use that easement as the driveway for the hotel.
Yeah, I've questioned them.
Because, you know, I've heard both sides. Yes, we can, no, we can't. There's just too much of this and I would be uncomfortable having to administer this without better data.
So I think we need more data and I think we need to hear, and I'm not asking that we should go to the county, they should go to the county and bring it back to us that, yes, they can use that as a right of way. And two, if they are building far enough away from the lines underneath. Because we're not going to prove anything and to the county says, yes, that's, they're okay.
Yep.
Would not make any sense. Okay? With that, I'll ask everybody, has anyone got any more questions? Then I will call for an adjournment of this meeting.
Okay.
It doesn't require a motion. We just adjourn it at 6:40.